Capron.
Here.
Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
I'm here. Make a motion to go into closed session of the City Council to discuss strategy with council about matters that are presently in litigation because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation. I'll move it.
Second.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Make a motion to go into closed session of the City Council to discuss strategy with council about matters where litigation is imminent because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation. Move it.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
We've returned to open session, second.
We're not taking.
K. Brenn?
Aye.
We'll be back, no later than 4:20.
K. Brenn?
Aye.
Here. Here. Here.
Water.
Can we stand for a moment of silence before followed by the Pledge of the Leadings, please?
Either. Either.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, we're going to go to the Consent Agenda today, which is Items 2 through 13D. Consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call votes asked for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item on the agenda or under citizen concerns, please come to the mic at that time and read or state your name and address for the record, please. I'll move the Consent Agenda, second. Two is the reading of the City Councilman's of October 1st and 2nd, 2018. Three is a resolution creating the Active Transportation Advisory Committee to assist implementation of active transportation initiatives. Four is a resolution approving a regional sports authority district grant agreement with the Iowa Economic Development Authority to offset the cost of sporting events.
Mayor Scott?
Yes.
May I speak on item number two, please?
Yep.
Erin Burzina, City Planning Department. I just wanted to give a little brief overview of the Active Transportation Committee as it would be formed. In 2015, we passed the Active Transportation Plan. And as one of the action items of that plan, we are to form an Active Transportation Advisory Committee. It would be formed of up to nine members from area agencies and residents at large. Some of those will include a member from SIMCO, a member that is familiar with health and wellness policies, and someone who, at least one member who has a background in bicycling and trails activities. The staff liaison for this advisory committee would be from planning staff, with optional support from Parks and Recreation, Public Works and Engineering, and the Police Department. Some of the things that the Active Transportation Advisory Committee would be working on is exploring some viable locations for bike lanes. That has been kind of a hot topic lately, and I know that there is a proposed bike lane to be completed from 36th Street to Outer Drive as part of the Perry Creek Outer Drive Connection Project. Monitoring for the implementation of the approved complete streets policy. Working on the creation of a bicycle trails and pedestrian master plan. And then also, a big component of this is going to be educating and encouraging the reduction of barriers to walking and bicycling throughout the city. And on the flip side, educating motorists and residents all around the community on how to handle bike lanes and handle bicycles on the road and walkers and people trying to get from here to there on anything other than a motor vehicle. We've had a lot of different developments coming up. The riverfront development, downtown redevelopment and housing, putting a lot more people in the downtown area. And then also, our new subdivision ordinance is going to be complete pretty soon. And we'd like to be able to advocate for active transportation concepts in some of our new developments that we've, you know, been unable to do or not been organized to do. The demand for other options to travel or commute is only increasing. And with bikes and e-bikes and e-scooters and all of these different ways to get around, and we all need to figure out a place to fit. So that's, in a nutshell, why we would like to form this Active Transportation Advisory Committee. We have several members from the audience, from Sulan Trails Foundation, Sulan Cyclists, SIMCO, and Downtown Partners, if you would like to hear from any of them on their viewpoints of this advisory committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to be heard? All right, well, good luck.
Yeah, the key remarks from me are to reduce the barriers. The key remarks that you made, reduce the barriers and increase the safety. And I think that's really key.
Yes. The education component.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five is a resolution temporary closing 4th Street from Jackson to Jones, October 13th, for the October Madness Event presented by the Riviera Club. What are the hours of this closure?
At night.
It can be at the end.
No news.
Mayor Council, Angel Wallace, City Parks and Rec. The requested hours are the closure for setup is noon. The event will start at 7:00 PM and conclude at 12:00 AM.
Give me that again.
They will do setup starting at noon.
Okay.
The event will start at 7:00 PM and conclude at midnight.
And the streets are closed till one AM.
And they will be closed till one AM for cleanup, tear down and cleanup.
I just wanna make sure it doesn't get carried away there because we've had some complaints about this club, and I wanna make sure that that doesn't happen with this event. Darren Davy? Are you in charge?
Darren, I'm, no. But I am a resident, Darren Davy, seven hundred Fourth Street. And I don't, I was planning on coming back up at twelve to speak to the liquor licenses so I can kinda, we can have a conversation about the whole thing at this time, or I can talk about it now, whichever. Because it's kind of the street closure and it's the liquor licenses.
Go ahead.
You know, we just have concerns over the event itself and both twelve A, one A, which is the license for this event, and then twelve A, two B, which is the new liquor license for the club. The owner has been in dialogue with us, and he's working at trying to get the noise reduced inside the facility that we're hearing in our residence. But we have had a couple of instances where we've had to call the police to get any sleep at all because the place runs till four in the morning. And the issue that he's also had, but admits he doesn't have really much control, is the issue outside on the street as people are coming and going. We've had facilities near us before that are a more traditional bar in Tumpkin. It's, they're in and out, but when that's going on till four in the morning, that's, that's just a, well, I was gonna say a long night or a short night, depending on if you're talking about sleep or being awake.
I have one question before you go any further.
Fire away.
Okay, right now, they don't have any, any kind of liquor license, right?
They don't have a liquor license onsite, but.
Do they have beer?
No, they don't have a liquor license at all, but the hotel across the street, and that's actually what's being used for this event, is the hotel is getting the temporary liquor license in twelve A, one A. So the club is hosting in the event, and we're using the hotel's liquor license.
Well, it says Club Riviera is getting a new liquor license.
Yes.
We do have a representative from the club here, and he can address that.
Well, let's do, we're gonna go order here. We'll go one at a time so that everybody gets their time. Go ahead.
So the, 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 the issue we just have is the noise and being able to get some sleep. So, you know, if we can keep that under control, we're fine. But it's, it's both an issue inside the club, which he's working on, and, and has, has made great progress with that. But it's the, the idea that we're now taking the event outside, and then I'm a little confused about changing the dynamic of the club with a, with a permanent liquor license. And, and he can speak to that, but it's.
Has to be closed at two, at least that way.
Yeah. So.
I wanna make sure of that.
Well, they just can't serve.
Kids deal after two o'clock.
Correct.
Okay, I wanna make sure of that. Okay.
No. So what, they can remain open, can't they? They just can't serve.
I don't know about that.
I don't think so.
Not if you have a liquor license, no.
Not if it's regulated by a liquor license.
No, you gotta close it too.
Related to that.
All those years, you weren't even enforcing the law, you were supposed to enforce it.
Well, hey, I was, though, I want you to know that, Bob.
Rhonda was always legal.
I was legal, swear to God.
As an example, I can name several bars where that was common practice and was not.
But that's only where you cops went afterwards. I could name one too. Out on the west side, I remember that one.
That was fifty years ago. Anyway.
So at one o'clock, let me understand this. I'm gonna go back, and so I understand.
Okay.
Barricades gotta be down, party's gotta be over.
Yes, on the outside, on the street.
Okay.
Now, I also assume there's a sound permit.
Yes.
Approved. And the sound permits used to, I was looking to see if there's anybody from the Police Department here, but the sound permits always used to say at the bottom, barring a bona fide complaint, they can remain open until, I thought we used to do eleven PM, but maybe it's midnight now. And if it's midnight, they could stay open to unless there's a bona fide sound complaint. And so my encouragement would be if it's too loud and it's disrupting, that you should be able to call the Police Department, and they probably will offer an opportunity to tone the music down, give you a warning. But if they come back a second time, they have the authority to take the sound permit and revoke it onsite. I believe.
That's true.
But how come we don't let the Hard Rock make them get done at ten, and we let the rest of these guys go till one?
Well, they just agreed to that. The Hard Rock did.
Understand that, but it's for the benefit of the neighbors is why they agreed to it, and we oughta be just as equally concerned about these deals, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree. Well, the sound permit would be direct the authority to amplify noise or music outside past midnight. But midnight to one is not covered, there shouldn't be any amplification of, it should just be you cleanup and your cleanup and whatever noise.
Okay, so his thing is about being outside.
I do not.
At this time, I do not know what the sound permit indicates.
I could tell you from my experience having rock concerts outside, it was till midnight, and then we got it switched to one thirty. So anything after one thirty, if we were supposed to be doing, being good little people, there was not a problem, and we quit doing sound at one thirty. So, and that would include the whole, the Hard Rock, if they wanted to, which, I mean, it's, they could stay open till one thirty, he could stay open till one thirty, any bar that wants to, that's gonna be outside, that's a sound, well, the sound permit covers that, but also.
I do not know the sound permits.
I know it because, well, I know.
The vacated area, see, I get the impression that this location was like a social club, and we talked about it previously.
Right.
And that under twenty-one could go into it. Under twenty-one certainly can't be in the area that the liquor license applies to.
Name's David DeLion. Address is twenty-eight oh four Jennings. I manage the club, and we got a sound complaint off the bat. Darren, I understand, the first night we were open, we had no heat, so the doors were open. So it was kinda loud, and I spoke with Darren Davy. He came in the next day, said he was a little loud. I said, I know the doors were open, and I work with you how to keep it down. So me and him been corresponding, we text each other, I say, hey, how was the sound? He goes, a little bit better, but I could hear people talking in the street. I was like, I can't really control that, you know, just let me know. But, so I thought me and him were on good terms of corresponding to get to a reasonable sound level. And then they, last week, they did a noise complaint, official noise complaint with the Police Department. You know, and I've been, so each time the Police Department comes, I try to talk to them, I say, what's, you know, a good level, I can keep this at, so, you know, I'll take them to the end of the building. We'll walk to the end of the building, you can't even hear a sound. You know, they say, okay, this sounds good, keep at this level, I'll keep at that level. The next week, we'll get another sound complaint. And then another officer says, well, no, if you can hear it on your curb, you're gonna go to jail. I mean, I, literally, the Police Department has got really aggressive with me on the sound levels. Like, literally, they're threatening to take me to jail if they can hear sound on the curb in front of the Riviera. It's a Riviera Theater designed to hold sound. We've been looking around for years for a perfect location to create a nightclub. And our ultimate goal with the Riviera Theater is to buy it, renovate it, and have events out of there in the future. We just need to make what we're doing right now work and viable for we can get enough funds to take over the theater, and we wanna bring events to Sioux City. There's, there's, I think there's potential in this area to do something. You know, I thought we're downtown Sioux City, so I thought we're a perfect location. We're not in a, you know, in a residential neighborhood. But, and I believe these noise complaints, you know, I spoke to some tenants in the apartment. I do own a business called Tent Masters, so I've been in there before. And I know they're pretty much soundproof apartments. And I spoke with tenants in there before, and, and I called, there's a tenant lives in there. I called her, I say, hey, you been hearing noise complaints, any sound coming in the building? She goes, I haven't, but the neighbors have been complaining, they're just people that don't want you guys there. So I believe people could be colluding to get us out of there, you know? And every week, we have to deal with the Police Department, they're getting really upset with us. And I don't know how to deal with them, I don't know how to get to a reasonable level. The Sioux City don't have a decibel, a level for nightclubs. I got decibel meters and everything. I'm willing to go to an apartment and adjust the level to where it needs to be for we can stop having these noise complaints. And, yeah, I understand, right now, the club's operating as a BYOB, but it's gonna change, and we're changing the format, you know, we're just experimenting with different concepts. And right now, we're changing it up, you know, it's gonna, they'll have a liquor license, and we'll be ending at two AM. But I did speak with the Police Department, people that control the alcohol and liquor division. They said it could go to four AM as long as the liquor is caged up and we're not serving. They said, I don't know, I'll, I will check into it again, but that's what, we met with them Friday, and they said, if you're not serving liquor, you could be open till four if you wanted to.
I'm gonna tell you some. This is how I look at it, yep.
It's like, so there's no alcohol served after two? So people come into the bar, it's a dance club, so people are dancing, having a good time. By three thirty, it dies down. Everybody's buying water and energy.
They can't, they can't do that.
You gonna let them bring in their own bottle?
They can't.
No, no. No, after two, no alcohol whatsoever. I mean, we haven't had any issues, but we will.
Close at two o'clock, and I'm gonna vote against your liquor license.
But we're gonna go, it's gonna go to two.
If you're gonna keep it open after two o'clock, I'm gonna vote against your liquor license. I know you're gonna go to the state and get it, but I'll feel better as a result.
Well, we're, we're not gonna stay open past two. I mean, that's what we were doing right now, since we didn't have our liquor license. But once we get the liquor license, we're just gonna stay open till two, one thirty, one forty-five.
Talk about bar business, talk to me afterwards, I'll give you some tips.
Well.
Yeah. But, um.
But you're, you can tell me that, you can tell me that, and as soon as you get that liquor license, you can tell, you can go down and tell me to take a hike, because I'm gonna do what I wanna do. And that bothers me. You gotta be a good neighbor in these situations. Let me finish.
Okay.
I don't care if they're making complaints or aren't making, this guy's a pretty reasonable guy. So I don't think he's making it up, number one. Number two, nothing, my mom used to say, nothing really good happens after midnight. Well, nothing really good happens at four o'clock in the morning, I know that for a fact. And that neighborhood has become a neighborhood that doesn't need an all-night, four in the morning booze-serving place. It doesn't need that. And if you don't wanna hear that from me, too bad, because I'm telling you, the way I vote is you have to be a good neighbor to your neighbors. And I'm, I'm a little concerned that this thing's gonna go and be loud, and, and, you know, one night, maybe, I guess we can live with it, but I won't vote for a one o'clock again if it gets carried away, I can tell you that. You won't get another one of these till one o'clock if I get to vote, so.
Here's the other side of it, though, Bob. I understand where you're coming from, but we also do this for other Four Street.
And we make other people close early, we have that right. So I said, we'll give them a chance, is what I'm saying.
Okay, I'm okay with that, then, because, you know, what you do for one, you should do for everybody, give them at least a chance.
Yeah.
So.
And that's why we're asking, just a chance to make this work. You know, if I would've known you guys, you didn't want it till midnight, I would've did it till ten, nine or eight, you know, whatever, I would've.
And you could still do that, too, without, you know, just because we're saying it's okay to stay there till one, you can still do it till midnight.
Well, officially, it was till midnight, we're gonna shut it down at midnight.
The event is done at midnight.
At midnight, the sound.
By one.
I know, the sound, outside sound, we're gonna cancel at midnight, nine thirty, maybe eleven thirty. And maybe we can even do eleven if it makes everybody happy.
And you know what, here's the other thing, maybe this might be an idea, maybe get to, maybe have a little meeting with all the people that are upset. And y'all sit down and talk and say, because you seem like a reasonable guy. You seem like, you know, you could talk to these people and, you know, get their ideas, am I right?
Well, and it sounds like you have a decibel reader, and so even if during the day, if you can maybe coordinate with them, I think they have a group that gets together, like a building association.
That's what I like to do, it's just.
And so my thought is, if you could find time with the building association, or whatever they call themselves, perhaps you can have a discussion, it sounds like you and Mr. Davy communicate, to be able to get that reader up into the hallway of what they're hearing during the day, just turn it up to the level that you would normally have it at, and if something can be agreed upon. However, I do think that you are gonna get the Police Department upset if they're back there all the time with people outside, and that's, I understand it's outside of your property, but.
The problem is, people smoke, so they go outside to smoke cigarettes.
Yep.
I'm gonna try to find a way, maybe to shift them over to the side of the building, away from the apartment. Already been talking that to my other employees, management, saying maybe we could shift people out the side door if they need to smoke. I mean, it's a new deal, so I know we're tweaking things out, but I'll make it work. I will get together with the neighbors and talk with them, and, and just get at a reasonable level for we can make everybody happy.
Can you make that happen? Okay.
Will, will it be your employees selling the liquor, or will it be Ojo's?
The event is, so my understanding is the outside event, there's gonna be a beer garden at the Howard Johnson Hotel.
Okay.
So there'll be a beer garden, so people that were, are gonna buy beer, they're gonna go to the beer garden, they'll get wristband. So what I need to confirm now, because I didn't know, I didn't, you guys are saying eighteen-year-olds cannot be on the street, then? At this event?
No, they can, you just wristband.
Wristband, okay.
Yeah.
Because I know, I thought, all right, so we'll have a beer garden.
They can't.
To serve the alcohol, the beer, where they go buy it and they get wristbands.
Because you can be eighteen walking around Awesome Biker Nights.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you could be eighteen walking around this event.
Well, then it has changed dramatically.
Is that not true? I could be mistaken, I just know.
It had to be, they had to have.
I know you could be eighteen going around, you just have to have a wristband.
Yeah. And that's what I.
There is a defined area of where the permit is good for.
Where they can serve the alcohol, and the area where they can serve the alcohol, minors cannot be inside of.
Unless accompanied by an adult.
Now, the only way they get away with it, well, I guess maybe that's, is it because they vacate the property that?
It's no longer classified as a public street, so it's for private purposes, once it's vacated and they allow them to have.
I was gonna say, because Awesome Biker Nights, there's no beer garden, it's you just serve booze and everyone walks around. With minors. Anyone else go to Hard Rock? I mean, you go to a Hard Rock concert, you have sixteen-year-olds, and everyone's drinking around them, but it's because you're banded.
Couldn't walk over and go inside, too.
Yeah, you should be able to have underage, as long as the twenty-one and older are banded, they're the only ones that can have alcohol. And I would really tell your security guards and police officers to watch.
None of us really know, let's have him talk to the Police Department.
Yeah.
I don't want him getting in trouble, because we.
Yeah, I have talked to the Police Department. And just for you guys to know, we got ten security, we got, the Sheriff's Department's gonna be there, regulating things, so we got the Sheriff's Department gonna be there, we're hiring them, gonna hire them for the night.
Great.
And whatnot, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else be heard? Anything else, Darren? Some statements probably made that might not have been accurate.
Yeah, I would like, we didn't, to my knowledge, nobody made any calls to the police or any noise ordinance until that first weekend, when we all laid awake till about four in the morning. And, you know, I, David seems like a good dude. But the representation of our text exchange, I texted him the second week they were open and said, I noticed improvement, but we can still hear pretty, hear, hey, David, it's a little better, but we're still getting pretty good thumping base, can you take it down a few? And there's a three-week gap before I got a response. So, you know, a midnight text, if it doesn't get responded to, I'm not getting any sleep that night. So we'll, we'll try to work this out the best we can. My concern, you folks know me, I've been in front of this group pro-business a lot of times. And so I, you know, I'm not trying to drive a business out, but I, I'm not sure this is the best fit for the neighborhood that it's in. You know, we had a theater there, and the theater occasionally, you'd hear some, you'd hear during a, you know, action scene or something, you'd hear rumbling for two seconds. And by about eleven o'clock or midnight, it was done for the night. You know, it's just a completely different story with, with what, what the building has turned into now. And, and that's our concern, and it's real. I mean, the night we filed.
Something more, when they serve, serve and liquor, so.
The night we called, the Police Officer actually came into our unit to make sure that he could hear from our unit. So we're not making this stuff up. So we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to work it out.
Maybe you guys could settle with like a time limit or something, like done at midnight?
We're not voting that way, we're not voting that way.
I'm Jim France, I also live at seven hundred Fourth Street. And just wanted to add that my good neighbor, Mr. Davy, is a lot nicer than I am. And I, you've gotta understand that two weeks ago, Saturday night into Sunday morning, there were five police cars there around two o'clock in the morning and drug, drug-snifting dogs out. So you can't totally blame that on the business, but that was the only business in business at that point in the area. And it's not happened in the six years that I've lived there before. So the noise thing is not just an in-the-building issue. Individuals urinating in the street, there were loud screeching tires and motorcycles leaving, and that's happened nearly every weekend since they've been open. And you can say, well, you can't blame that on them. And, uh, you can say, well, you can't blame that on them, that was their patrons that were leaving the building. And the police are aware of it, and they were told this, they told the five complaints that are issued before they issue, um, a summons or, or act, take action against the business for noise, uh, issues, those kinds of things. You know, it's, it's, it's not getting better. I just want you to know that.
Yeah, you can- We've actually hired Night Patrol, so they, Night Patrol's been working with us at the club, so anything that goes outside, they take care of, but we've never had any fights, any incidences outside. Uh, one time, um, someone must've caught in a fight or something, so the police department did come in pretty aggressively, thought there was a fight outside, but there was no fight, so we had Night Patrol working that night, so, um, if you guys need to talk to Night Patrol, you can talk to them and, and they can give you the feel of the club, you know, the, 'cause usually I have them sitting outside, patrolling outside. Yeah, I mean, we literally have six, seven personal securities and Night Patrol, two Night Patrol officers work in our club.
What age are you, what age of people are you getting in there?
Uh-
Younger, older, a little mixed?
It's a, it's a little mix. Right, you know, right now it's a little mix, but mainly it's, mainly 21 and up. Friday nights, we were doing 18-plus, only on Friday nights, so, but it's dead. Friday nights, we had like, last Friday, 10 customers come in, so it, it didn't go, it didn't go well with the 18-plus on Friday. Then Saturday nights, we're doing 21-plus.
If you're getting a liquor license, you don't wanna go below 21.
Yeah, we're not, we're not. It's gonna go straight 21 and above, so. But I just wanna let you guys aware that we hired Night Patrol, they work the outside, and we have seven security guards, even if there's only 10 people in there, we always got a lot of security, 'cause I don't want any incidents at all. We've never had any fights, any incidences at all whatsoever.
That's more than any bar I know of around here, so that's pretty darn good.
Yeah. If I need more, we'll hire more. I mean, but, alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Six is a resolution assessing a $500 civil penalty against Applebee's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, 4555 Southern Hills Drive for violation of the Iowa beer, wine, and liquor laws. Seven, a resolution is adopting plans and specs for the Western Hills, the Indian Hills Pressure Zone and Tank Demolition Project. Eight, the resolution authorizing the city attorney to proceed under the power of eminent domain to condemn property in connection with the Bridgeport West Improvement Project property at 2300 and 2310 Boulevard of Champions. I need to have that pulled for a vote, please.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Abstain.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Nine's a resolution awarding a purchase order to Sioux Land Forklift or Kamatsu Forklift. Tanner, actions relating to agreements and contracts, A is a resolution approving a contract to hydroclean for annual manhole rehabilitation project. B is a resolution approving Amendment 1 to the Consulting Services Agreement with JEO Consulting Group for the Western Hills, Indian Hills Pressure Zone and Tank Demolition.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council Brad Pitts, Water Plant Superintendent. The amendment was inadvertently left off of the RCA, uh, the city attorney has copies for you.
$138,000 to have public meetings.
The $138,000 is for the onsite inspection of all of the construction work for all three phases.
It says resident project representation, so what does that mean? How big's the job?
Uh, estimate is 7.1 million.
Okay, and so this is for the inspection?
Yep, that is, the $138,000 is for the onsite inspection during the construction.
And how long is that construction gonna take?
Uh, it'll go over two construction periods, I believe. Uh, Phase 1 will be completed first in 2019, Phases 2 and 3 will be bid together and completed in 2020.
And that's for both phases?
That's for all three phases.
Basically, they're gonna have a guy there every day?
Uh, Ethan Joy with JEO is here with us, he can probably answer what the timing is for those onsite.
Yeah, afternoon, uh, it is part-time inspection, two 24-week construction periods, about half-time for one person.
120-plus your burden on him a year. Well, if it's a half-time, that's 69,000 dollars a year, for two years, we're paying you for that person.
As far, it's, it's based on hours and hourly rate, which includes all our overhead and everything, so.
Right.
The probably average hour, hourly rate on that would be, um, I believe 115 an hour.
150?
115, please.
Why do I think that poor guy's not getting 115 dollars an hour, but that's a lot of money for inspection, but I lose every argument here on that, so I guess I'll just shut up today and lose it again, but that's just a lot of money for inspection on a, this is a water project, there's no paving, there's nothing, it's water, you're digging, you're digging pipe into the ground.
They'll have the option to either bore or trench?
That doesn't change the inspection, my friend, it doesn't change the inspection one bit.
And I just never know what the other alternatives are, or what other options there are, Mayor, you know what I mean?
For that, you could put your own inspector on for two years, and have him be there every day, every hour almost, or at least half-time, and even with benefits. Pull it for a vote, I, then I'll feel better, even though I'm gonna lose.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
No.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Uh, can I ask Brad real quick before I give you a vote, is, is it just for the onsite inspection, the 138,000, or does that also include any additional services?
No, the 138 portion of it is solely for onsite inspection.
Aye.
Thought I had a second vote there for a minute. But finally, Pete, you were coming around. D is a resolution approving a contract to wake up construction for the Public Library Morningside Branch Renovation Project.
Mayor, on that one, um, I just want to thank the, um, Library Board of Trustees and the Library Director for, um, looking at this project in total. In other words, you gave us a, a complete list, it was very complete, very comprehensive of what needed to be done, what could be done at the Morningside Branch Library, and, um, and you got it narrowed down to what you consider critical, and you've also took a position, which I appreciated, to hear how you were on that with the Board of Trustees, about whether you do the project in total or do it in phases. I think doing it total, like you're proposing, is good. Um, so I just wanna tell you, I appreciate the hard work that you've put into this.
And I, I've got a couple, Helen, questions, I, I just wanna clarify, first of all, the, the base bid on the RCA says, uh, is 25% uh, below the engineer's estimate of, uh, 1,274,000, but that's based on the base bid, not on the total, but you're asking to do the total.
Yes, Helen Rigdon, Director of the Sioux City Public Library, and yes, we, um, we had some things that we did not include in the original bid, which was furniture shelving, and then also, uh, an upgraded, uh, staff workroom, because with the money, the bids coming in so low, we can expand the children's area and add some interactive and sensory tools for the children, and so-
Yeah, except, that's kinda where, where I'm at. It, it would look like you saved 325,000 dollars on this bid, but if you're using the alternates, it really drops down to about-
Right.
A quarter of a million dollars.
Right.
A little less than that.
Yeah, a little less.
And I don't want you spending money you may not have in the long run.
Right, no.
But the other thing that I was a little curious about, in the financial impact, it says the project currently has an available balance of 1,253,915, which includes two grants applied for, equalling a total of 310,000. I guess, I'm a little confused by that sentence, is, does the available balance of 1.2 include the 310, or does, you've already got the money?
From MURD, that's the one grant. The other grant, we'll know next week, and that's 60,000, and the other monies, uh, are in restricted funds and from our friends in our foundation.
But I think the way it's reading, it's included in the 1.2.
Yes.
It is included in the 1.2.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And people, the people that do are handicapped or not able to get out, you do deliver to that?
We do homebound deliveries, yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm gonna ask our, uh, put it on our Facebook page and also our website to make sure people are aware of that, and-
I'm not sure they were, that's great, thank you.
Right, and then we're also gonna try and find if we can find a place to put the book drop out there that we can check every day.
Great.
We haven't found that yet, but we're still looking, so.
What about Morningside Library, do you have a reciprocal agreement with them or not?
With the college, they used to have one, but, and it was just to, like, our, our patrons can go there with their card, and that was that, it wasn't to drop off materials or anything.
Right, but I mean, somebody can go to the Morningside Library-
Yes, 'cause then their students can use ours as well.
Right, I just wanna make sure people, I don't think people understood that, I wanted you to make sure you-
Yes, we still have that agreement.
Let them know that too as well, then, if you would.
Okay, sure, well, thank you.
I gotta say one thing too, I, I got a couple phone calls today about passing this, and one of them was on, she was an older gal, she said, and she was very excited about the improvements that we're doing for the library, and evidently, we must get an older crowd out there also to-
We do.
To the library, and, um, she was very appreciative and looking forward to all the, um, new renovations, so, thank you.
Okay, that's good to hear, I'm excited, 'cause I don't wanna hurt the bad.
Well, the M- M- Morningside Commercial Club is very excited as well.
Good.
The members that I spoke to.
I think it'll be a great thing for the community out there.
Sure.
And we do have an older crowd, they love it, 'cause they can park by the door, come in, and it's easy for them, so.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
D is a resolution approving a mutual release and settlement agreement with RSNH and DGR Engineering and Snoozy Survey. Levin approved total checks issued for the reporting period September 2018 in the amount of 8,583,064.91. We need a motion to amend the agenda by adding an application for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, and vapor permit for Chasing Clouds Vapor Collective, 3208 Zinging Hills Boulevard. I'll move that.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Applications for beer and liquor license, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of the liquor licenses? I'm gonna not pull the one on the Riviera Theater, but I'm gonna be terribly, terribly disappointed if that thing stays open past 2:00 o'clock, because I think that's, when you, when you stand at that microphone and tell somebody something, then you ought to honor that, even though you don't necessarily have to, so I hope you'll honor that by doing that.
I don't know if legally they can, I, that's another thing, they should be checking, I, I think we should check on Twitter, so.
We can't do anything about it, but a man's word oughta mean something.
Oh, for sure.
Standing in that microphone telling them, so.
They can't have any alcohol anywhere on the premises that is accessible, that, that's the catch, because they're governed by the liquor laws, and they can't have anything that's accessible by any patron on site.
I didn't think you could do, I didn't think you could do a combo in Iowa.
Yeah, I didn't either, because I-
You either are or you aren't.
Yeah.
13, a receipt a minute, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Concludes the consent agenda, anyone to be heard? Call the roll, please.
Waters?
Aye.
Capran?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
In light of the public, uh, input, since I'm on the other side with those that had concerns on item 5, I need to abstain. I should abstain on 12, A to B license. Conflicts of interest. 12A to B.
Okay.
12A, yeah, to B. Otherwise, vote aye.
Scott?
Aye.
14 is a hearing and ordinance, 101 Court Street, P&amp;Z recommends approval. This motion requested to defer this item till October 22nd, I'll move that.
Second.
East-West Alley adjacent to 1321 Grandview Boulevard, petitioner's Louis Nuno, P&amp;Z recommends denial. I will move the item, and again, if you want to vote with the staff and P&amp;Z, you would vote no, just so you know. You wanna vote in favor, you would vote aye, 'cause the motion will be in favor, so, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay.
Item 15?
Just a minute, we go with her first, okay? Then you can.
Hello, Michelle Bossnellis, Chair Planning and Zoning. Um, yeah, it is for, um, the vacant alley east-west adjacent of 1312 Grandview Boulevard. The Planning, uh, Zoning Commission did deny the request, it actually was a pretty close vote, it was actually 221, with one abstaining, um, so that-
That's a denial, just for the record, that is a denial, I get it.
Um, and, uh, the petitioner is wanting to use the alley for parking, not only for his adjacent multi-unit building, but for his other two properties located on Grandview Boulevard. And while the P&amp;Z recognized that the parking in the area is tight, especially for multi-use, um, or multi-units in the area, we still felt that the alley, um, might not be the best solution, especially with any pending developments, um, to that block. And as I said, the petitioner is here, and I'm, I'm assuming he wants to speak.
Go ahead, name and address, please.
Yeah, I'd like to point one thing, under the recommendations in the-
Name and address first, please.
My name?
Yeah, name and address first.
Louis Nuno, N-U-N-O.
Address?
613 Center.
Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to point at the first, uh, on the finding of facts on item number 2, uh, under recommendation says there is a four-bedroom in a four-family conversion. I'd like to let the council know that basically this is a four apartment, there is two, three two-bedroom and one one-bedroom. Uh, so basically, I don't know what the, the requirements would be for parking, but I mean, obviously, we need the parking, that's why we apply for the vacation, you know, we're trying to vacate. The reason why we vacated it for is because just adjacent to the pro, basically, I own 1312 Grandview, 1318 Grandview, and 1320 Grandview. Uh, first, I tried to acquire a property that is behind the 1318 and 1320 Grandview, which the city owns. Uh, at that point, I said, I, I got the response that if you're not for sale, that they will not sell it. That's when I took the approach to vacate the alley. For the much more needed parking space, extra parking space, because most of my ten, most of my tenants park on, up the hill by the stop, and just to reduce the traffic and reduce some of the, you know, commotion during the winter time, I, I figure if I can get the alley, I can gain much more needed parking space for my tenants. And the other part, I would say is, uh, um, I don't, so, and, and number 6, I really don't know if I, I comply with the municipal code requirements, maybe I do, maybe I don't, so I, I mean, now by knowing that actually there is four apartments, two, three two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom, I might change that, so, um, it's not, uh, okay, uh-
I got a question, excuse me. How many cars you think are gonna be having to park in this alley?
How many cars are they right now?
How, how many cars are you thinking are gonna be?
I would gain at least, I would gain at least six parking spaces.
And, okay, so when we have, have snow coming, who's gonna take care of the alley?
I normally take care of the alley, this is the other thing, for the last 40-plus years that the Casa del Rey or the, the building next to it owned the property, that alley has always been vaca, you know, never taken care of by the city, never, you know, it's never been serviced, there is no transit, there is a part here that says there is transit to it, there is no transit whatsoever. We're talking 40-plus years, that the building of Casa del Rey has been there, there has been, the city has never spent a single penny to work on that alley. I, so happens that I acquired the buildings across Kitty Corner, because I wanted to clear up the neighborhood, I wanted to clean some of the people that lived there, because there was drugs and alcohol and different people, we had been incidents of people even dying of overdoses, uh, stabbings and stuff like that. When the opportunity came to buy those properties, I took the chance into buying them, so I can create a better area for the neighborhood and create a more comfortable area for the restaurant. At this point, there is no further developments, anybody has approached to buy the property of Casa del Rey, I have plans to reopen, that's all we know. There was buildings across from it, there were just a bunch of drugs, prostitution, and all kinds of different things. I mean, all of you, I remember that time, when there, those buildings were tore out. all of you remember that time, when those buildings were tore out and made the new room for the seven, for the come and go. So now the neighborhood has changed, also the part that the school did, you know, healing did by cleaning up all the neighboring area, you know, on the other side, now, you know, we have been there for, the building has been there for 40-plus years.
You're talking Casa del Rey.
And, but I owned the building for 20.
Wait, stop, stop, you're talking Casa del Rey's building?
Yeah, Casa del Rey building.
Okay, are you gonna purchase that parking lot, or have you thought about that?
I'm sorry?
Do you own that lot?
Yeah.
So you own Casa del Rey's building and the lot?
I do.
So you want, so now you're talking about maybe opening up Casa del Rey again?
Reopen it some probably next year, yes.
Okay, so, can some of your people park in that parking lot?
They're currently using the parking lot, yes, they do park in it, but the problem is, you know, under the process of either reopening or leasing the place, getting it ready for be, for somebody else, then I would create a problem for the parking. We're looking into getting to do some good work on the place, either reopen it or lease it out, once it's ready. If I lease it out, then I would have to come with an agreement with the purchasers or the buyers to give us that space. So yeah, we're currently using some of that parking space, but I'm gonna make sure that I have additional parking space in case something comes in between. Now, the other reason is because the much needed space is because we own 1312, and there's no parking space for the other two buildings, so it's just to create more parking space for the tenants. And to, I mean, and really, closing the alley, I talked to my neighbor to the south, he came in approach and says, you know, if you're gonna get it, you're gonna clean it, you're gonna make sure we don't have no garbage and stuff like this, I'm not have a problem with it. Why not? If anybody checks the records, we had to have stabbings in there, but since I owned the other three buildings, we had, we had basically cleaned that area really good, we don't have people going over there, hanging around, I mean, we're just doing the best. And I didn't think I was gonna have that much of an issue acquiring this, and like I said, for the last 40 years, the city has never had an interest in that alley. And for the last 20 years that I owned the Casa del Rey, which it was closed for the reasons of the neighborhood and everything, you know, which we all know what's going on over there back then, and now that it's getting ready, that the neighborhood has changed, we're looking into reopening, we're looking, we have invested, the last years that it's been closed, we've been paying our taxes the way there should be, we paid taxes in a 24, a $220,000 assessed value, and we've been faithfully paying all those property taxes for all this time. But I can tell you that in those 20 years that I own it, the city has never done any work in there, there is no transit in there, and the city has not invested anything to clean it up. Since I got the apartments, I'm the one who cleans all that area, I'm the one who physically goes and removes the snow out of that, removes the snow out of all the, both alleys. And, I mean, I just find.
Could you drive through the alley before?
I'm sorry?
Was the alley accessible before, could you drive through the alley before?
Everything has been accessible, yeah, I mean, nobody drives through it than my tenants, there is, some people, some people, there is a lot of people that walks through, but they're the people that comes from, you know, come and go with drunks and stuff like that, we try to stop that, you know, some native.
Think that they're not gonna drive, people aren't gonna drive through.
There is.
Anyway, I mean, if people are gonna park there, they're gonna assume that that's a drive-through.
Well, we're gonna, if we got quiet for, we might block it in half and it doesn't infringe anybody for access or anything. Now, the other reasoning for the development says that it will infringe or it will impair somehow farther future development. There is no current plans of any future development right now, there is nothing out there on the table, and if I've been there for 20 years and nothing has been done to this alley, all I wanted is request the alley to improve the parking space for my tenants and to improve the area at the same time. If I'm gonna invest money on it, make it look good and have a good place, you know, and make sure that the area is safe for the neighborhood, you know, I need to require the property. And not unless the city is planning and going to start, I can start complaining today or tomorrow and they're gonna invest money on it right now, or they're gonna wait till there is any further development. Really, it doesn't affect anything. Acquiring that particular alley doesn't affect much. Casa del Rey, the east side of the alley is already owned by the Casa, so it's not a true, there's not, there's not a bribe to, see, you see that picture, there's no bribe to in the area.
Okay, so, I wanna catch up, because I'm confused, Jeff, is the north-south alley closed, is that what he's saying?
And vacated?
No, Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager, the map there on the screen in front of you shows the block that we're discussing, the eight.
I don't care about that, I wanna know if that east-west alley, or north-south alley is closed.
The west half of this alley is currently open and the north-south is currently dedicated right away.
The west half of where?
So this is the alley that's being requested to be vacated, so this is, this is, the entirety in the red.
Right.
Everything on the east was already vacated some time ago, the north-south is still open and is right away.
And who owns the stuff to the south of this alley?
So, the petitioner owns Casa del Rey and this here is a.
Right, right, or where's?
Right here.
Yeah.
This is a multifamily apartment complex that's owned by an individual to here and here. The petitioner owns this structure, this structure and this structure.
Okay, so does that, whoever owns this, does he propose that alley to park, I don't think so.
He does not, he's at a different elevation.
And he said he was okay with the vacation.
We provided him notification and I believe the petitioner has spoken to him, he was not at the meeting.
Okay, and where are the lots that the city owns?
The city owns these two lots up here, we acquired those with NSP Neighborhood Stabilization Program Funds, and we do have deed restrictions on those, the petitioner came to us wanting to purchase those with our deed restrictions, with the federal funds that we use to acquire and demolish those properties, it cannot be used for a parking lot, and so we explained to the petitioner that at this time we cannot sell those.
And the only way to get out of that is pay the feds back.
Pay them back or.
Or do something else.
The two deed restrictions that are currently on the property for the use of the money is for green space or for low-income housing. So as we've discussed with the petitioner, we do foresee some redevelopment opportunities in this block, and those two lots would be available for that redevelopment.
Okay, but there are the other ways, you can, you can go get green space somewhere else, I mean, you gotta make it equal for equal, to make the feds happy.
I don't know with that particular program, if you could do like a land bank type situation, but.
There has to be a way to do that.
Our concern all along has been, as you can see, these properties.
I'm not proposing that, I just wanna know.
These properties here that the petitioner owns, as you can see, they were originally constructed as single-family structures, you know.
If I drive by them every day, twice some days, I know.
The size of these lots were never meant to hold, in this case, on the south side alone, we have four apartment units, and I think, Luis, I'm guessing between all three of them, you have 12 apartments?
There's 12 apartments altogether between the three buildings, and every, every single building has got a separate gas and electric meter, they've been set up, I mean.
Well, that doesn't matter.
Before ordinance were a little different, but they've been preset that way, that's how I purchased them.
Okay.
And Jeff, did HCI buy part of that too, that was also?
They bought the former KCAU Channel 9 Satellite Site, correct. That has been.
That's part of the future development that you're discussing as well.
It's an opportunity, it's been acquired, yes.
And the thought is, we don't want to vacate this alley because what would that, what would that alley bring to the development?
And without having an actual redevelopment in front of us today, it's a little difficult to answer that.
Sure, sure, just hypothetically, I mean, what?
Any future access, if a new development wanted to come in here and provide additional access off of Grand View, we would still have that alley for an opportunity for access into a new development. You know, currently the petitioner is allowed to use that to pull in for his own parking, at this time we just have a hard time supporting the vacation, not knowing what the rest of the block will look like in the future.
I think that's personally a little bit of a stretch, but.
Does the north-south alley would stay open?
Yeah, the petitioner's not requesting to vacate.
If we vacate this west half of the east-west alley, that would have to be paved?
For new parking, yeah, he would have to meet the new parking requirements, which would have to be paved.
Oh, so if he wants to park on that, or at parking, he would, were you aware of that?
Yeah, we want the alley so we can create more parking space, as he.
But what he's saying is now with the new parking regulations, if you want to park cars and have parking there, you have to pave.
I know, I understand that, and I mentioned earlier that if I wanna, I already invest money on that alley myself, gravel and stuff like that, I'm willing to make more investment, yeah.
You plan on paving?
Yeah, yeah. And the argument of hindering any future development, there is no future development. Basically, if there is any future development, that alley right now is not really on transit, obviously, you know, some people goes around, even you, if you go through, you got to that alley and then you turn around and say, I don't wanna go through here, you're not gonna know what the others say, and you don't come to the other section where Casa del Rey is because it's not the alley. You get to the, to the first end of the alley at the, going to the north, and you get to the half part, and you don't wanna travel farther north because that part is not developing, that part of the alley is also, which is adjacent to the two properties that we were talking about, the city.
I believe up on the north.
Yeah, the north side of that, right there, is not, is not developed, there is no pave, there is dirt, there is, I mean, no, I occasionally, actually I occasionally have to go through that to my plow and clean up because people get stuck in there and try to throw a little bit of dirt and gravel, I have been doing this for many years.
This would be the.
Is this the alley right here?
This would be the intersection of the north-south alley and the east-west alley, and we're looking to the west.
And basically, I was interested under two lots behind it, because it makes perfect sense for the community, for us, to have enough parking space for all those 12 apartments, you know, but at this point, the city is not, they don't sell, because, I don't know, I don't have all the.
Okay, so would he be paving where the cars are, all the way to the building?
All the way down the other street, down to Grand View.
Well, we have to pave the whole thing, you know, concrete, whatever, do something with it, and then block it up and make sure, you know, but basically, yeah, we, I really need the parking space, I need to add parking space for my older tenants, especially in the winter time, and.
And in parallel along one side, is that what I read, that that's what you're?
Well, we're gonna, we could even block it and have, you know, add parkings on one side and on the other side, that would be a way to set it up, you know, once it's all cleaned up and it's all straightened up, then it's a way of developing and kind of market the best way that it works, you know, to gain the most parking space that we could.
Well, and that's where I, I just don't understand how you're gonna do it, I guess, that's where I struggle, is if you pave that whole area and you have people parallel along there, how are you gonna get your plow through?
Well, once, once we go, once we go in there, you know, that's, that's what we, we can do, once it's paved, and if it's cut in half, I can go with the plow here and we can use plow, I mean, we can use blowers and do it by hand, I do some of the sidewalks by hand, we always do that, we go around that sidewalk every year.
Sidewalks by hand.
And then we have a ski loader too, I mean, and a ski loader is easy to, you don't really need a plow, you know, a ski loader is, I mean, you can maneuver really easy, you can go all around cars, you can even lift it above cars and, you know, and destroy it with the snow, and we do have a ski loader. So, that particular point, it can be fixed, I mean, how are you gonna remove it, we do that all the time, every winter in different areas. And, and so, I mean, you know, I didn't think I was gonna come to all of these, you know, with that alley, that, like I say again, I'll repeat, you know, it's never been taken care of. In the last 20 years that I owned the property, I'm the one who's been taking care of it, even gravel, when it needs it, because it gets, you know, erosion and stuff like that. And in the 40-plus years that the Casa del Rey's been there, nobody services this road.
No, we understand.
Yeah, we've heard that.
We understand.
And there is no, and for any future development, I think that if there was any future further development, they would have to come and basically somebody has to buy the whole, all the properties and have it to make it physical. If I was gonna develop in there, I wanna come and buy all the buildings that are next to that alley, and I'm gonna make it worldwide, I'm not just gonna be concerned about the alley. If I'm building on the other side facing West Forest Street, it doesn't affect me at all. My, my, I have the other alley, plus I have all West Forest, plus I have, you know, Douglas Street.
Okay, so, could you speak a little bit about the discussion that was had in the meeting of the for and against of why?
Yeah, you know, I think, I think all of us who were there were, were just kinda debating, just like, you know, you guys are, it was, it was a really hard choice, there wasn't, you know, it was just the petitioner spoke viewpoint, you know, we, we went back and forth, because you can see where he needs parking for his residence, and we sympathize with that, because there isn't, there isn't a lot of parking there, but we were struggling with the same thing you're struggling with, how is this gonna work, what is it gonna look like, how are you gonna fit the cars in there? And you can see, that's why I think it came to the vote that it did, because both ways. So we, you know, it's, it's a hard one, it's a difficult one.
All I can say that I'm there every day and that I know that it'll be, that I'll make the best of it and I'll gain some parking lot, because I'm there and, and, you know, I have some little bit of experience with construction, I have been around it, you know, I'm still have my license, current license, and I still have my bond in here, but I'm not, I haven't done any work for a long time, but I mean, I'm still, you know, current with my, with my license and everything, so I do have a good idea.
We're gonna see if anybody else wants to talk, so, anybody else wanna talk on this item, please come forward.
Okay, so, if we vote yes, that's for him?
Yes. You vote no, you're voting with the staff.
Do we need to tie in the paving part of it?
You can't park there without it.
Conditions?
That's a, that's a, that is, that's not part of the zoning.
But he wouldn't have to park there. They could, he could just acquire it as a buffer or additional.
Yeah, but if he's gonna use it in his transportation, now that changes what it is, we don't have to, but he does.
I guess I would have that, that's a good question, Dan, I mean, what's the threshold then? If he starts parking on it, then we go out and enforce and say, then he has to pave it?
Well, make, amend the deal to make it?
That it has to be paved, then.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager, yeah, any parking on there would have to be paved, and the petitioner is aware of that and has stated he would pave it. Now, he could still acquire it and not use it for parking, so I don't want to put any conditions on approval if he doesn't use it for parking. The zoning and sign code will take care of the standards when it comes to any additional parking.
Okay, thank you.
And the item tonight is just on the vacation, not the property.
And I would agree to do any paving necessary, it's just a matter that you're running out of time, so it would be, I wouldn't park any, anything in there until everything that is required is done, that's all I can say.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Redkin?
No.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
We'll waive, we won't vote to waive the statutory rule, so it'll be back next week, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sixteen, a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the rebid of the hall hail damaged roofs and building projects, I'll move that.
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin? Aye.
Seventeen, a hearing and resolution, proceeding proceedings for the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement, the issuance of $33 million worth of sewer revenue capital loan notes, I'll move it.
Second.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Eighteen, a resolution awarding a contract to LNL Builders for the Convention Center Eighteen is a resolution awarding a contract, L and L Builders for the Convention Center renovation project. I'll move it.
Second.
Dave Carney, Public Works Director. Uh, before you guys, there's a resolution to, uh, approve the project with the base bid plus alternate two, which would be exchanging the EFS exterior to brick. Uh, this project was bid with a base bid of, uh, the renovation, as was discussed earlier, with the storage. And in EFS exterior, we kept the deduct was alternate one to remove the storage. And then alternate two was to keep the storage, but change the exterior from EFS to brick.
So, there is, there, you did not do the storage?
There's an alternate, there was an alternate deduct to storage. That would be, that'd be base bid plus alternate one would be, uh, deduct the storage and have an EFS-
No, what is recommended includes storage and adding brick.
Yep, that's-
So, uh, Ms. City Attorney, do we learn any lessons about the development agreement when the contractor is the, is also the bidder of the deal, that we should tie in the future our limits of what we should be exposed here?
Yes, as we have done in the casino agreement.
Just wanna make sure we're learning from these things. I think this is a sad, sad situation. I think we got-
Rooked.
Taken advantage of by a contractor here and an engineer.
Architect.
To put in the door, and that really is upsetting to me. Seem to serve the public purpose very well either, so I don't know where. And I could certainly vote no because I know there's three votes for it, but that, that's not the right thing to do either, so. But it really, really bothers me. I, I-
We're kinda between a rock and a hard spot because we're all sitting here shaking our head, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we got-
I'm with you, but what do you do? I mean, it's-
There's nothing we can do. Except learn from it.
Excuse me, Joel German, uh, L and L Builders, forty-five East Sawgrass, Dakota Dunes. Uh, Mayor Bob Scott, if you would, which, I'm a little confused to ask a question back there. They couldn't answer it.
Which cut- Not about your bid, it's-
No, I just wondered about which contractor, when you, you were referring-
When I say contractor, I mean, Kinseth and, and their engineer.
I got you.
That told us what this was gonna cost, which was some two million dollars over budget now between the parking ramp and your project. And that's just not acceptable. Nobody misses a job that far.
I couldn't, I couldn't disagree with you, Moore.
And, you know, now we're in a situation where if you don't do the project, they'll blame us when they're not successful in the convention business. Has nothing to do with our local contractors because five of you are so bid the job all within pennies of each other. So, that tells you what the market really is on this work, not what, not what the engineer thought it was, so. Call the roll.
Now, you're in, yeah, Matt, our-
Architects.
Yeah.
Trust me, they got an engineer associated with us. I bet that's the engineering side what ran way over budget. I bet the architect was right on.
Waters?
Sorry?
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Begrudgingly, I'll vote aye just to be a good team player today. I hope you guys remember that in the future. Citizen Concerns, please come forward at this time and tell us what you got.
Come on up, Dick.
I'm the only one?
You're, well, gosh, so far.
Well, Mayor Scott, Councilman, Manager of Hadmore, City Staff. My name's Dick Williams, thirty-two, forty-six Cheyenne Boulevard. And I recently had eye surgery. I end up with glasses. I see that I'm not in a great minority here. But my situation is that I end up with bifurcles. And I'm having, you know, stress and strains and that. I appreciate your patience today because I wanna practice reading something to you.
Got three minutes.
I still subscribe, you can quit interrupting. I still subscribe to City Journal. There was an article in there I thought was interesting. And it says, "Dan Moore, a partner with Moore, Heffernan, Muller, Johnson and Mese LLP, received the newly created Iowa Supreme Court Voice for Justice Award at the Iowa State Bar Association Annual Meeting this summer. This award is in recognition of the attorney's support and contribution to the administration of justice. Each Supreme Court Justice nominated an attorney, Iowa attorney, to receive the award. Moore was nominated by Justice Daryl Heck. Congratulations."
Thank you.
Good job.
I didn't know that. Congrats.
Dick.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Is that it?
Hey, that's enough.
I mean, that's great.
That's a positive concern. We love that. Great job.
Thank you for, thank you for that. That was wonderful.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much. Dick stole my thunder. That was number three on the list.
Well, Greg, you know how the mayor feels about number three?
Yeah, yeah. We know how you feel about number three.
Now, he's down to two.
I would have remembered it, too. I'm positive of it.
Well, now we're down to two.
All right.
I, I just wanted to, um, acknowledge first the Celebrating Community Foundation and the committee, uh, and their committee and recognize the thirteen individuals who represent really, uh, the very best in our community, all of whom gave time and talent, uh, their talents to help others in need. And I also want to acknowledge, uh, Rudy and Flora Lee for being recognized for their contribution and commitment, to, uh, in helping to make the Celebrating Community Project work and their, their name on the building as well. Uh, that really was a very nice ceremony. And it's really, uh, it's really good to see how the family reacts to the awards as well and what they share. It's really mercy for their free dental clinic that they held Friday and Saturday at the Tyson Events Center. Uh, according to the paper, the clinic provided free dental services to approximately nine hundred patients. And on Friday alone, they had over twenty-six hundred dental procedures. So, uh, a great big thank you to the, again, the Iowa Mission of Mercy and to all the dentists and dental hygienists who spent the weekend here donating their time. And, and, and I know the mayor said he was down there and it's just, uh-
Crazy. It was crazy Friday.
They just did a great job, so I think that's worth mentioning. And I was gonna mention you. I just want you to know I didn't forget you. I saw it in the paper on Sunday too, and that's very nice.
Thank you.
And well-deserved.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Ditto.
I thought you had to work with poor people to get that award rather than rich landowners, but I guess, I guess that does know something we don't know.
Didn't last long, did it?
All right, Rhonda.
I'm, I'm passed.
All right, Alex.
I, yeah, exactly. I feel like we have-
I have to be somewhere by eight.
We have, no, I actually have to be somewhere by six. We have more meetings and there are more public events and more everything than I could even mention this week, so. Please look at, please look at the posted meetings. Uh, there are a ton of them. Thank you. That's fine.
I have nothing further.
I just have, uh, I would, I would ditto what Pete said about those two events. They were incredible. Uh, but I did have somebody ask me this. I know what the answer's gonna be when the legal department, the police department get done with it, but I'm gonna at least throw it out there, off-road vehicles that are licensed and why we should not do that.
I had someone ask it a long time ago.
Say that again?
Off-road vehicles that are licensed to be on-road vehicles, which in most communities of smaller size, I understand that, like Kulteens and Movils, you can, if your golf cart is to be able to be licensed, you can drive it to the golf course.
And sure, and that is the rule within Iowa. You have to have a designated area by city ordinance in order to allow that.
Right.
What do you mean by a designated area?
You have to have designated roadways and areas where they can travel within the city.
Right, but out in Mobile, I think they designated their whole town.
Probably.
Wow, 'cause I got asked that actually in regard to ATVs cleaning.
Well, but that's, it-
Cleaning, like cleaning off their driveway and everything.
Well, they can do that. You can clean your driveway with them.
On, on private property, yeah.
Right, and you can even sneak across and do your neighbors if you're careful.
Okay. I just had someone ask me about that.
But, but you can't necessarily drive it down to the Walmart store like you could in Mobile or-
Okay.
But I think what makes it legal then is brake lights, headlights, turn signals, all that stuff.
Fully serviceable as a vehicle, so.
And Mobile, I think they, you can drive any, they, they don't have to be street legal. They let them drive them down the street as long as they have a reflector on the back and a flag.
Well, I don't wanna get that clear, wait.
Where did Mobile get a Walmart?
I moved way adjourned.
Capron?
Aye.
Redkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Can I be helpful?
I like my fifty-seven Chevy because it gives me-
That's it.